Anybody have any comments on the minutes for the previous meeting?
This is Hans and Reed, I move to approve as submitted.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
We have a first and a second, any comments? Would you call the roll for a vote?
Absolutely, and I just want to check, I believe I heard Commissioner Reed first and Commissioner Dawson second?
Correct.
Correct. Correct.
Great, thank you for confirming that. First, we have Chair Brassfield.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Dawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Fletcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Latassa?
Yes.
I do want to state for the record, I do have Commissioner Latassa coming in at 3:59. We did start a couple of minutes early today, so I will note that in the minutes as well. And for the roll call, sorry vote, we still have Commissioner Milich.
Yes.
And Commissioner Reed.
Hi.
Great, thanks so much, that was unanimous, back to you Chair.
Thank you. Do we have any general comments from the public not related to today's agenda?
And I'm going to go ahead and take this moment to announce some information on making public comments for this meeting. So, just so you know, to make a public comment when viewers watching live on YouTube or Channel 25 see the announcement on the Chiron, you can dial the conference line at area code 831-582-6500. And once you have entered the system, dial five to raise your hand, and you'll be added to the queue to speak. Again, that number is 831-582-6500. And just double checking our line right now, and it doesn't look like we have any public comment at this time, but we'll keep an eye on it and alert the commission.
Thank you very much. If we had no other items on the agenda, let's go to item number one, number two, Portola Plaza. We have a staff report, and who will be presenting?
Thank you very much Chair Brassfield, I believe we have Jerry Hiddelman, our contract planner, on the Google Meet. Jerry, if you could unmute yourself?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Cole. I have a PowerPoint presentation, I just need to put that up on the board here. So, let's see. I think I do.
And Jerry, I also have it if you need assistance, so just let me know.
Yeah, I think that would be great, if you could put it up there Kim.
I sure will.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Thank you Chair and Commissioners. Today we have the project Two Portola Plaza AT&amp;T Wireless Facility Modifications Use Permit Number 20-0171. Next slide please. So this project is, well first of all, this facility has been existing on the Two Portola Plaza site since 1991. And it's done various modifications over the years. But for this project, this will be another modification, which is removal of the nine existing panel antennas, installation of nine new panel antennas, and some associated support equipment. The owner is Custom House or Portola Hotel and Spa, and the applicant who is present, you have questions later, is James Phillips, MasTech. It's this property is Zone Visitor Accommodation Facilities District, and it's a general plan designation is commercial. Thank you. Now, I'd just like to explain the project review process. This proposal is a modification to an existing facility, I've stated. They're being actually processed as a new wireless facility request. And that's because they're expanding their leased area a little bit on the rooftop. So we're looking at this as a new project. And the purpose is to provide improved 4G service and to install first net, first responders, which is also part of the 4G network. You might have heard that on some of the projects we've had at the planning commission in the past. Because it's a new project, it's 150 day shot clock, which runs through December 7th of this year. The project location again is the Portola Hotel and Spa, Two Portola Plaza, which is bounded by Pacific Street, Del Monte Avenue, and Tyler Avenue. And you'll see on the next slide that the facility is on the roof. So we have the location on the roof, as you can see on the left, it's a little bit zoomed out. And as we focus in, you can see the antenna arrays on the roof. And then also another box showing the support equipment. So here on the left, we have what the existing arrays look like. Now, you'll see later, they're behind some fiber class reinforced plastic screens. And you can't actually see these, but they're behind the screens, and you can see on the left that the antenna arrays are groups of three, and they're fairly close together. And then if you look on the right, the proposed is they're updating the equipment, but they're also moving the arrays to be spread out a little bit more, if you compare the two diagrams on the screen. So that'll help them in their coverage, and also improving their 4G network out in this area. Next slide. And here's the new support equipment. So this again is totally screened, it's on the roof, it's on the penthouse. And they're mainly putting in a number of new, what's called, remote radio units and other support equipment to improve services out there. As you know, under this, the COVID-19, a lot of people are at home, they're using their computers more at home and their phones. So, you know, these upgrades are necessary, and we'll see a lot more of these, I think, in the future. Next slide please. So here's a very simple diagram, so the existing is on the top. And again, the antennas are behind screening panels, but they're kind of smaller antennas. So they're going with a little bit bigger antenna, so they'll have to replace these screens around the roof area. And that's shown again on the view study, which is up on the top is the existing, you'll see very little difference. So on the bottom is the new screening screens, that's all you'll see. And they're slightly taller, about a foot and four inches taller. So we have them on the left-hand side and on the right-hand side on where the hotel sign is. This is looking southwest. Now this one's looking from Oliver Street, looking south. And again, you won't see the antennas or equipment, just FRP screens, which are colored to, an off-white color to match the building. So really won't notice this if you're walking by or driving by. Now we do have some RF exposure on the roof. They did find through the RF study, which was confirmed by our third-party reviewer, CTC Engineers, that the main exposure would be on the roof to workers. So, and then below that, to the public, we have below FCC levels. So the blue shows that this exceeds the public limit. And then the yellow, a little bit of yellow near the penthouse, shows that it exceeds occupational. So what this will take is keeping the roof locked, keeping the public out of there. Maintenance workers that go to the roof will need to be trained to stay outside of the RF exposure zones. And if they need to go into those zones, you know, we can turn down the antennas temporarily. So this shows the exposure on the roof and where the antenna arrays are, shown by the Y's. Next slide please. So again, we do have, because of the potential exposure on the roof, that we do have some special conditions. And they include to keep the roof deck area locked and restrict public access and provide RF hazard signage. That's conditions number 15 and 18. And we have the applicant must document compliance with RF requirements prior to actual operation of these facilities that provide worker training, that's number 16. And then submit a post-construction RF coverage map for the roof area, condition number 17. That's to make sure that it meets the diagram I showed you before, and that they're not exceeding after they put in their new equipment. And want to really guarantee that this will be a safe operation on this roof. Next slide please. So with that, they are in compliance with city regulations, with the FCC regulations. The staff recommends that you approve Use Permit 20-0171 to amend UP 16391 with the the recommended findings for decision, and of course, the conditions of approval as noted. Thank you, and available for questions.
Any questions from the commission?
Yes, I do, Mike Dawson. I noticed in the slide two previous, that it looked like the antennas were out in the air and not behind a cover. Would you show that one again, and tell me that I'm thinking wrong on this?
Yeah, that might have been just from the RF report. Oh, yeah, that's showing where they're located behind the screen, so they're
Not this one, not this one, the one before that.
Okay.
Not that one. That looks right, because I can see, it looks like little antennas, but should we be able to see them from this angle?
No, not at all. It's a little hard to see at this scale, but there is definitely the screen in front of them. And you know, of course, those screens are designed to let the RF waves be transmitted, but it's only visible to the public. So.
Okay, and there was another question now. In one of the charts, it showed that in one of those situations, there was 700-plus times the amount of radiation that was okay for the public. And 700-plus, that's a really big number.
Yeah, I believe that was just showing again on the roof.
Right, on the roof.
A hundred percent is the means you meet the requirement, so if you're at 700, you're probably like 700 times, seven times more than what would be allowed for the public.
Right.
That's why, again, there's conditions to restrict public to that area, and to make sure that there are workers up there, they're trained not to go into those areas. So it doesn't, but it's, it just exceeds by a certain amount.
Right. I also have a question for the applicant.
Great.
When he comes around.
Any other questions? We're not going to go to the applicant yet. Any other questions of staff by the commission?
Yeah, I just, I had, this is Hansen, I had a question in one, in Susan Nine's email or letter, she asked a question, and we just got this, just, I mean, minutes ago, about exposure to guests at the hotel. And again, I just scanned through this, and it says, "The FCC emission compliance from the site configuration is at best borderline, even excluding consideration of cumulative exposure from others nearby RF sources." And that's in our, the city report? Is there any response to that? I mean, so at best borderline, I don't know what that means.
Yeah.
Is there any kind of, is there any kind of response to her email?
Yes, again, this is Jerry Hiddelman. Yeah, we had the report by Hammid and Edison, which was submitted by the applicant, showed that they're way below FCC limits. Let's say the highest would be about 15%, and then we had, the city has a third-party reviewer, as I mentioned, CTC Engineers, that goes in great detail over the Hammid and Edison report. And they agreed with everything, they said that in one area, it was maybe, it was 70% of the requirements, but it definitely did not exceed. So they concurred with that Hammid and Edison report, and I, that's why we're confident that there's no exceedance of public limits in the hotel or in the surrounding area. We also did a cumulative study, because you might recall that the Marriott at 350 Calle Principal has quite a few facilities on there. Now that's about 450 feet away from this site, and we looked at where they're pointed, and how those arrays were laid out. And we found that there was no cumulative impact at the street, or at the hotel, or either hotel, from these two facilities. So we checked that out very carefully.
Okay, great, that was it, that was my only question.
Thanks, Hansen. Jerry, I have a couple of questions. You said that in your presentation, that this was wired for 4G. Will that include a 5G upgrade with this equipment?
No, I don't believe we're looking at 5G with this, with this project at all. Just 4G, and then the first net is also under 4G as well.
Also in your, the comments, it talked about a 6.6% exposure. And what does that represent?
Well, that's, 100% would be the FCC limit, so if you're at 6%, that's significantly below that. So.
And where would that area be?
The, probably the highest exposure would be at the, I think it's, the building's about 70 feet, so it would be just at that, the rooms, or not even the rooms, but the balconies below the penthouse, so the uppermost hotel units. And that wouldn't be inside the units at all, it would be, if you were standing at the railing or something, you would be, that would, that would be where the exposure would be.
So, and that's not accumulative?
No, no, that's just directly from these, and it's, so if it's at 70%, it would be 30% below what the FCC is requiring.
Well, when I'm asked about accumulative, if a person's out there for 20 minutes, is that any difference than if he's out there for four hours?
No difference at all, that wouldn't, that wouldn't be a factor. I was thinking you were thinking cumulative is for the different facilities around the area, and no, that's just for, you can be out there for however long, and it won't increase.
I'm not talking about increase, but I'm saying if there's an effect by the RF.
Yeah, my understanding is there would not be, I'll let the applicant also address that.
Okay, then, thank you. Any other questions to Jerry before we move on?
Yes, Mr. Chair, this is Chair Latassa. So Mr. Hiddelman, first of all, can you put up the slide? It's in one of the reports, I can't tell you exactly where it is, but it's a, it's a plan view of all these these roof areas with different colored, sort of, you know, clouds showing the radiation areas. Can you, is it possible for you to put that, that page up on the screen?
Yeah, I think Ms. Cole has control over that.
Okay, well, Kim, is that accessible to you?
Are you discussing from the actual report that's been published, or the presentation we just showed you?
It was from the report, it was very, towards the very end of one of the reports. I'm sorry I didn't write down the page number for you. Do you know which one it was, Mike?
No, I don't.
Okay.
Okay.
It has very distinct colors on it, it's like blue and orange.
The blue and the yellow.
Yeah, blue and the yellow.
Yeah.
I believe that was exhibit B.
Yeah.
Yeah, there we go, okay, that's it, you got it. So, can you just, can you just clarify this page in relation to this 700% reference?
Kim, maybe if you go down a little bit more with those yellows? Yeah, I'm not sure where it says 700%.
Where does that 7?
It's on a chart. It's not on this photo.
Yeah, this one just shows exceedance.
Okay, well, if you could go back to that page again, so Mike, this is the part of my question. So this is a plan view with the blue and the yellow of where the expected sort of radiation bubbles occur in relation to these cell towers. And are there any sectional views that show a similar, those similar sort of radiation bubbles, you know, in relation to a section of the building?
Vertical, yeah.
A vertical, yeah, thank you Mike, a vertical section.
Yeah, we don't have that because the radiation goes out in a horizontal manner. So we wouldn't see anything vertical. So I don't, we don't have anything that would show that.
So you're saying that if you're in a hotel room below these, because there are, I don't know what the vertical distance is, but it's, it looks like it's something in the order of 10 feet between people's heads in the hotel rooms below, and these devices. You're saying that it's, that radiation amount drops to zero on a vertical section like that?
I can't say zero, but it's below FCC standards, because we had that checked out very carefully, and
I see, okay. Is it documented anywhere in these reports, this vertical section question?
I don't know if the vertical is addressed directly, but it does say that where there is the public, it would be at 70% of the FCC requirement. And again, that would be not in the hotel room, but on the, let's say, the balcony, which is on the edge of where the building is.
I see.
So that's where the highest exposure would be, and that's still significantly below the limit.
Okay, so I guess the last question is, I just, I'm still confused about the 700% business and what it means. Can you just one more time try to clarify that number in relation to this project?
Yeah, well, 100% would mean that you're right at the FCC requirement. So when you're at 700%, that's probably exceeds it by seven times. And that would only be on the roof, and only if you're standing, let's say, in front of those areas.
I see.
That's why we're doing that, we have those very strict conditions.
Are there any, are there any diagrams that show the 700% zone?
Yeah, that was the one we were just looking at, so that yellow zone, the yellow
The yellow zone is the 700%.
Yes.
Okay.
And just on the roof, won't be in the room.
So I guess, I do have one more question. When we've looked at these kind of projects before, they have provided vertical sections showing this radiation clouds in relation to these antennas, not just in plan, but in section. And since they aren't part of this report, why, why weren't they included?
I don't believe that's true Commissioner Latassa, I don't think we've had vertical sections, I think
Sure we have.
I don't, I don't recall that either.
Yeah, I don't recall that we've ever had vertical sections.
Okay, Mike, do you?
I'm pretty sure we've seen those.
Yeah. So I guess, would it be reasonable to ask for those sort of sections?
We still have, we still have the applicant here.
Yes, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's it, that's all, that's all of my questions right now, thanks.
Jerry, I have a follow-up question. First of all, thank you for having the secondary agency can check and confirm those figures. But it talks about the slant of the antennae, and how that affected the exposure. Has that been resolved? What was done, for you raised the question, like a 12-degree slant?
Yeah, that, that's why we are making sure that they, they give us a post. After they construct the facility, we want to get another report to make sure that the angle's correct, everything is done exactly as stated in this report. So that's, that's very important.
Okay, thank you. Any final questions of staff? Then let's open up questions to the applicant, if we can.
Well, how about, how about a little presentation by the applicant?
Either one.
How you doing everybody? My name is James Phillips, I work for MasTech Network Solutions, and I'm representing AT&amp;T on this first net application. Thank you all for having me today and for taking the time. To jump right into this, I heard some multiple questions and so forth regarding RF exposure and so forth, and it, I do agree that sometimes it is difficult to look at the RF study produced, because it's on a two-dimensional scale. I have a Google Earth shot up, I'm going to try and share my screen and give you guys, excuse me, folks, if I can say that, I'm sorry. People on the call. Please, people on the call. Um. To get a better perspective of what's going on. So please bear with me one second. And please give me a nod or say yes, you can see my screen.
Yes.
Perfect. So on the right side, you should be seeing the RF with the yellow and the blue. Is that correct?
Correct, correct.
On the left is a, the satellite view of the hotel from the same angle and degree. Now, this, this is where this should hopefully solve some of the confusion about this. If we actually look on a horizontal plane, I think this is what you were meaning by the vertical. To see that this penthouse here where this yellow is. Is literally. Whoops, excuse me. Right here where these antennas are. So if you can see, this is the existing FRP screening that's there and the existing antennas are behind that. So when we increase this. These, or change these antennas out. If you were able to hover out in front of that. Without touching the roof, that's where you would be getting that yellow zone. Does that make better sense to everybody?
Yes.
So in other words, for an occupational limit. Where that's what the yellow is, it exceeds occupational is that yellow area. If uh, my construction team was actually out there. And working in front of those. They'd have to probably be on a ladder because that penthouse level is still tall enough above the peak of that roof. In that area is where that exposure limit is exceeded for the occupational. Now, the blue area would be. Where exceeds the public view. Now, last time I checked, no public will be allowed to be on this rooftop. One, it's not safe. Two, it's probably against the hotel policy. Uh, Mr. Dawson, do you have a question, sir?
Uh, yeah, um. Is that, is that, is that beam, it's a, it's a radiation beam. Is that, is that? Um, you're like a foot wide at ten feet out, or is it? Completely plainer? Is it, is it? Just like a, like a, like a tongue, tongue depressor going straight out there, or is it, or is it? Uh, a little, little more vertical?
Um, uh, yeah, so as far as the, the yellow uh, is concerned. Picture yourself inside of a basketball and you could put your hands out. And, and you probably will be a foot short of touching the outside edges. And all the way around you, that kind of bubble. Is what that's kind of showing. Um, it's not a direct beam as far as um, obviously standing in front of the antenna. If I was to hug it right in front of me. That would be the most dangerous position possible. Now, physically do that for anybody is almost impossible. So as I move further away, or I step to the left or the right from that, the exposure level goes down instantaneously.
It's the, what's the cube of the distance?
As far as the exact footage goes.
The inverse cube of the distance.
So thirty-seven feet out from the antenna face?
Yeah.
So roughly, if you'll bear with me here.
About. Two-thirds of the distance to the edge of the roof.
Pretty closer.
Yeah.
So I mean, as, as far as that goes. If my construction team is working on this roof, if they're inside that dot that you're seeing there. Then they're exceeding the, they're in the area where that exceeds the limit, which still doesn't mean they cannot work there. They have a specific timeframe. They're allowed to work in that area before they have to relieve themselves and take a break.
Okay, so, so that Mike's question earlier about cumulative, so it's, it's, it is time-based, time in the beam. Based.
Correct. It's not as if a bird flies by there and instantly is affected by it. If a bird flies through that area, it just keeps going, nothing happens. If I stand there. Um, in that, in that region that exceeds the level. Then I have six minutes to work, say, inside that specific area. But.
That's what Mike was asking, yes.
And, and the one, so from. Our employees' perspective, when we're working here and we're changing out those antennas, the actual, the signals are turned off. So when we're taking the old antenna out and putting the new one up, there is no stealth signal projecting from that vicinity.
Right.
So it would really only be somebody who is working, say, on the roof. Um, for the hotel, doing maybe some roofing work, tile or this and that. Um. But other than that, it's, it's pretty limited to exposure. From a physical standpoint.
Correct.
If that does help everybody understand this to a little, because unfortunately, like I said, the, the two-dimensional, a lot of times is very tough.
Yes.
Yeah. But I should point out that if you're um. At seventy percent and you stand out there, it won't go to eighty or ninety or a hundred. That's the maximum.
That, that, that is correct, Jerry. And, and to that point. As long as I'm not at the hundred percent mark. Of the FCC limit. I can stay there twenty-four seven. There is no effect on it whatsoever from all the studies. It's only when I get and exceed that hundred percent. Of what the maximum permissible exposure limit is for the FCC, is when I have to start taking the cycle time. Of work for, say, six minutes, leave for a half hour or so forth. If, if. So if it's at eighty percent, that means it hasn't even, that means it hasn't hit the hundred percent mark yet to even be detrimental to health. If that makes sense.
Yes, it does.
Any other questions?
Uh, I do have one, uh, Mike Dawson. Um. What if, what, what if I wanted to, to run uh, run uh, five G from this, from this uh, network right here? What would I have to do to, to uh, change it to make it to five G?
James.
Application, you meaning like if uh, AT&amp;T on, say, their next project, they want to modify it to do five G?
Correct.
Well, one, they uh. By the time they get to the point of doing five G, they'll have to look at the uh, compatibility of these antennas. Now. The antennas that are there now are having to be changed out because they are pretty uh. Untechnologically advanced and FirstNet is not adaptable to them, which is why we're doing the increase in height for the antennas. Because those antennas there are very outdated. Um, and they, 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 they can't even handle the performance of, and the requirements for FirstNet. As far as five G goes. That has to do with the radio technology. That has to do with. The site being designed for it, and if it's even necessary. Um, I think sometimes people don't. Uh, fully understand that not every single cell site is gonna have five G adapted to it. Because of the location and because of the proximity of other towers around them and so forth. Um, you know, this hotel could have their own wifi system inside, which would eliminate, you know, possibly a need for a five G. Um, there, I mean, there's so many different factors, but there's a, there's still a physical standpoint of equipment. That has to be modified. So it's not as if they would be able to go and take this cell site. And tomorrow say, great, we gotta prove the four G in first that somebody hit the switch. If that helps explain.
That does, thank you.
And, and every cell site is built differently because of the purpose that that specific cell site serves. So is obviously this cell site, um, it's on a very uh, high rad center, so to speak. It does a nice big broad blanket. It's providing a lot of coverage for cell signal, nine-one-one and so forth. In that kind of downtown Monterey area and especially around that, that expose, because there's so many things going on there. Um. But yeah, there, there's. There's no way to just go and turn this into five G tomorrow morning. If this was approved today.
Got it, Mike.
I got it, thank you.
Any other questions?
Uh, yes, Mr. Phillips. So this is Terry Latassa. Um. So if you have these, these uh. Transmitters on the roof. What angle off the horizontal are they? You say, are they tilted down a little bit? Are they tilted up, or are they pure perfectly horizontally um, oriented?
Let me see here if I can help with that. So. Oops, excuse me, am I not muted? Okay. So in a sense. Uh, another kind of a discussion about this. And I'll share my screen once again. The vertical down tilt. Um. Usually typically on a worst-case scenario site is only three degrees.
We don't have any, any illustrations.
My apologies.
There we go.
So what's, what's typically more important? Is the azimuth, the left-to-right swing of the antenna on a three-hundred-and-sixty-degree basis. So that puts the antennas, you can see, say, here up where my mouse cursor is, it's a hand, on a B1, this will be a new antenna. And that's the angle that it's shooting at is two-hundred-and-sixty degrees based on a compass.
Okay, so really the answer to my question, it's basically horizontal.
It, for the most part, it is horizontal. Um, the, the, the more severe down tilt you have of turning that antenna pointing down. The less ability the antenna has to go and push the signal out further. And because this is not small cell, we want that big lampshade of coverage. We're not trying to pinpoint a specific intersection. If that makes sense.
Sure.
But for the most part, most of the down tilts you'll ever see, and I doubt this one's even gonna have anything at all, is uh, usually three degrees. And a lot of times you'll see that on a tower that's two-hundred feet tall, where they need to slightly just kick them down just a little bit. But you'll never see an antenna. To where now it's instead of a vertical slope to where it's almost leaning more towards the horizontal plane. If that helps.
So, at three degrees, that's almost, that's almost. At three degrees, it's almost the horizon?
Mm hmm. Yes, correct. I could physically show you two pictures of three degrees and zero degrees and you go which ones are three degrees.
No, it's pretty horizontal. So the other question is the um, can you go back to the uh, sort of that uh. Satellite or it's like a satellite picture of the side of the building? I was wondering, can you, which balconies are in the zone where they might be affected by this um, seventy percent business?
So the, the first, the nearest balcony that's gonna actually be into it would actually be. Um, as far as the, the view path goes from the antenna, if everybody can see my mouse still.
Mm hmm.
I mean, this, this technically is the horizontal. If you're looking at the antenna plane here, it's coming out in this direction. So if you can see, my thirty-eight-foot mark is actually still there. I mean, this thing would actually have to drop about twenty feet down. Below to come down to this balcony here. On this first row here.
But you're gonna have antennae on, on two sides, on two more sides.
Correct, there's the other side of the building as well. However, this antenna, they're pointing at two-hundred-and-sixty degrees. So they're actually only pointing in this direction. So anything outside in that direction shows a lesser severe. Than what would be coming over on this direction.
Right, so where were these uh, balconies referenced in the reports?
I believe that, Jerry, forgive me if I'm wrong, but I believe that came from Lee and his team as far as the referencing the balconies and so forth.
It did, that's, that's correct.
And, and I think.
And maybe Jerry, you can clarify exactly which balconies they were talking about?
Yeah, um, James was correct. Uh, I don't, you can't see my mouse, but it would be the ones uh, directly opposite those antennas he was just pointing out.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, right, yeah, right there.
And, and when, when uh, when Lee had talked to myself um, regarding this, he had the same two-dimensional plane that you're seeing here. And he did not know where the uh, the building was actually located, that adjacent building that's kind of perpendicular to it. And so that's where he was asking you, you know, verifying about the, the balcony distance and is this. Almost the antenna pointing into the, inside the hotel room itself, so to speak. And so we kind of did this same uh, exercise that we're doing now to give him a better perspective, and that helped him realize that. This is nowhere near effective to causing any damage.
Yeah, and that's why we want to verify that it's, it's constructed correctly and it's exactly like you're seeing today.
Right, and so the um, the final question would be, let's say. There's a leak on the roof in that thirty-eight-foot section. Of the roof and the uh, they, the, the hotel uh, construction manager sends his contractor up there to fix the roof. What sort of measures are in place to make sure that people are aware? Will there be a sign on the parapet or something, or? How will people, how will potential construction workers be informed that this uh, hazard exists?
Right, no, it's, and it's a great question. And, you know, I, I don't have them up in front of me right now, but there are different levels um, of signage that are, the FCC has approved. Um, there is a notice sign, just letting somebody know they're walking into a wireless facility. There is the next level sign that turns yellow saying that you're entering the facility. Um, just to give you a heads up that it might, it may lead up to or exceed the FCC limit. Of exposure, and then you get into the higher calibers when it's red. And so the, the signage itself would be. Um, the red sign, so to speak, saying that it exceeds maximum permissible exposure, and that would be exactly. In the pinpoint direction of, if I were to stand there and hug that antenna, I would have to see that sign. If that makes sense.
But if some, let's say somebody is on top of the roof. In that thirty-eight-foot zone that you, you referenced, would, would there be a sign on the exterior of that parapet?
Uh, yeah, that, that is correct. So basically for them to even enter the roof, there's a sign at the door that's gonna be locked, as Jerry discussed earlier. To let them know they're walking into a wireless facility. And as they start getting closer. The sign levels increase for this, for the difference in exposure.
Okay, and what we're talking about, just to be clear, if you look at the, at the photograph we're looking at right now. There's the white part of the building, that's the, that's the penthouse, right? To the left of that is a reddish roof area. So somebody that's going on to that reddish roof area, that's included in the um. You know, that um. Blue area of the map, there, there would be a, there would be some sign visible to keep construction workers in that area.
Right.
Right.
That, that is, that is correct. And, and let's not forget too, there already is an existing cell site here. And the hotel employees or the roofing contractors that work there are aware of this as well. When they check in with security, they have to get protocols to get access up to the roof. Um, that allows them to actually start seeing the signage as well, notifying them of this.
Okay, thank you.
Not a problem. I have a similar question. Um. In previous projects, we asked this question, in the event of an emergency, which is unplanned. And you have to have firefighters or police go up there. I couldn't read those notices, uh, those access notices, what the verbiage was. But I don't see. A. Emergency. Shut-off. Capability. That in a case, in the event of an emergency, you call this phone number and they will shut it off immediately. Do you have that?
Um, and, and in fact, the. That's part of the uh, the requirement with this hotel and how it's set up, is, let me zoom in here. So the antennas are on the outside of the building. However, in this room where my mouse is pointing. That's where the actual AT&amp;T equipment is located. And so they can actually turn the power off to the room. The hotel has the capability of doing that.
But is there a notice there that, how it's done? In the case of a fireman walking up there in case of a fire, it may not have an employee around to, to ask him that question.
Correct, and, and then once again, this is why we have the locked door and the signage as well. So the, the, the fire department in an emergency situation. Um, let's say they took an axe and they opened up the door. Um, they will see the AT&amp;T door with a sign there. And I do know that most of the fire departments are trained as far as this goes to how to kill the power to the vicinity, because there is the master disconnect switches and so forth. Um, that's part of their training, having an electrical background. Um, and, and we'll work with the hotel and whatever uh, the city decides of what they deem as. A, a, a physical notice or publication, so to speak, for that specific reason. Um, we can have that done as well.
Well, is there a sign right there that says in case of an emergency, shut off this switch?
Uh, at the current moment, I don't believe so.
Could you do that?
Uh, yeah, if, if that's, if that was, needs to be done, I don't see that being an issue at all.
Yeah, um. We, we do have a requirement, this is Jerry Hiddleman, that um. There'd be an emergency contact number, so.
Yeah.
They could call, but you know, sometimes you don't have time to do that, you're right. So maybe uh. Having that instruction up there would be a good thing.
Well, and, and let's not forget too, here's the uh, the one caveat to all this, and just to let everybody understand. Last time I checked, the, the fire departments, they don't, I mean, they may have some CB radio and so forth, but they're all requiring cell phones too. So at the point when you're shutting off the cell. So at the point when you're shutting off the cell site because of an emergency at this hotel location, I'm wondering what the real reason is why the fire department's on the roof in the first place? If that, does that make sense?
It, it's little things like, like lightning strikes, like fires, like a landing gear of an aircraft going through a roof, creating problems. It's called an emergency.
Right.
And I'm not, I'm not trying to be sarcastic. It's just
No, I totally understand.
It happened, yeah.
It's happened. I've responded to many things like that. So I
Right. And as far as shutting off the, the, the cell site goes, majority of the equipment involved is all low voltage as well. Um, runs negative 48 DC voltage. Um, there's only the power plant inside the shelter that is enclosed that runs on a, a, a normal wattage, just like the hotel. But yeah, we can definitely have a sign if that's what the city needs to see. Um, I know Jerry, we discussed that in the past about the number to call and so forth. Um
Right.
You know, we, we can put that right on the front door where it's locked. So anybody who accesses the roof, they have that before they even enter the rooftop.
Thank you.
Is that a question, Raker?
That, it did ask my, you did answer my question. Thanks. Any other questions? Okay, let's bring it back to the commission for, for discussion.
Before we do that, we need to open up to public comments.
Thanks, Kim. I would just, just remember that. We need to, and I expect some, so. If we could.
I'll just take this time to announce the public call in number. It should be uh listed at the bottom of the screen on TV or on YouTube. And there is a slight delay between both. So we do recommend following the online YouTube and either turning off your viewing device or walking out of the room so that we can hear you with no feedback. That call in number is 831-582-6500. The conference ID is 192-7648. Thank you. Oh, and we do have a few callers on the line. So um, the first number is blocked. So I will go to the second one first. Um, caller with the last number, um, the last four number 4334. You are on with the planning commission.
Hello? Hello? I'm not hearing anything.
So you're on with the planning commission, Ms. Nine. Go ahead. They can hear you.
I've been told the line is unmuted, but there's no voice.
So Susan, we can hear you. You are on live with the planning commission.
Hello?
Susan, you're unmuted. Can you not hear me? Susan, can you hear me now?
Susan, can I hear my speaker?
I hear my speaker speaking. That's the only person I hear speaking. He must be waiting on the line as well.
Jennifer, can you take yourself off as host and I'll go ahead and assume to be host?
Can you hear me?
A moment.
Yes, I'll do that now. I have, I have you muted, Kim, because I'm not supposed to have the phone on at the same time. So I can't
So I believe the planning commission can hear you now. So please go ahead and speak.
All right, um, this is Susan Nine, and I have um, I'm calling to express grave concerns about the independent RF report that was hired by the city. You do not have a representative of the CTC who uh conducted these um independent tests of the RF. And that's unfortunate. Uh, but in his absence, we have to rely on his words and his report. And they state in our original report, we noted that the proposed penthouse antenna mounting location for that 180 degree sector elevates above the southeast building of the complex commands a direct line of sight view of upper balconies of the building within the general public exposure analysis area. We noted too that our calculation of exposure levels from that 180 degree sector antenna indicates that demonstrating full FCC emission compliance from this site configuration is at best borderline, even excluding consideration of any cumulative exposure from other nearby RF side sources. You did not put up the slide for the cumulative impacts in the packet. Um, actually a variety, it looked like you're piggybacking on a um Verizon study of the cumulative effects. And that's what, where the diagram was that you were all looking for with the um, much more colorful array of um impact. Because our initial, uh, he went on to say, because our initial inspection found that the proposed modification would create RF exposure levels that would be at best very close to the FCC limit. We recommend out of an abundance of caution that the city uh provide onsite measurements, um have a T and T provide onsite measurements of the emission levels to validate compliance. Mr. Hiddleman stated earlier that the antennas can be turned up and down, powered up. These are the highest powered antennas I've seen in any applications coming uh from the city. I would hate to be in any of those rooms underneath those antenna rays. Um, when I was on the wireless ordinance committee, we were told repeatedly that it's illegal to put any language in permits or in ordinances that require ongoing testing of the RF limits. So um, this is creating a problem that will not be over the 10 year period of the lease period. Uh, there will be no measurements taken um after the initial one, which is unreliable when it's being taken by the party who stands to benefit from from um being, being uh in, within compliance. The, the report went on to say, we reiterate our suggestions that city request them to do this. Um, a difference of a few degrees of beam tilt, which could occur during installation, and I assume during any emergency, could mean that instead of delivering 70% of the FCC limits, the antennas would exceed the limit. This should raise sufficient doubts about the ongoing safety of this equipment over the period of its life. This hearing is months away from the expiration of the shot clock and the applicant's design needs to be modified to assure that no members of the public will be exposed to radiation beyond the FCC limit. The city's own expert has determined this to be a distinct possibility and that is adequate legal grounds for denial. Your duty is not to not permit any facilities which are not designed for RF compliance within a high degree of certainty. The wireless ordinance committee were assured that there will not in fact be ongoing testing. The city staff confirmed that it can require, cannot require routine testing. This is a serious breach of trust and um you shouldn't rely on the provider's answers. You should be relying on the independent experts' own words. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Nine. I'm now going to unmute the last four digits, 3756. I believe that's Mr. Pekin. Mr. Pekin, you're now on with the planning commission for the city of Monterey. Please make your comments. Mr. Pekin, I have unmuted you with the last four digits, 3756. You are live with the planning commission. I'll go ahead and go to the other caller. The other caller is um identified as blocked. You are now live with the Monterey Planning Commission.
Um, so I'll go ahead and give my comments. I want to reiterate what um Susan Nine just said about the uh questions about compliance that CTC raised. I also want to raise issues of a more uh procedural uh nature. The owner's business name on the application and repeated on documents is incorrect. The Secretary of State's website does not have a listing for Custom House LP. And the company that the service provider for First Med and Wireless, there's no name. Um, AT&amp;T and AT&amp;T Mobility are not registered with the Secretary of State. Um, there are 16 registered corporate names and 20 registered LPL or LLCs that have AT&amp;T and or AT&amp;T Mobility in the name. So what is the correct name and why isn't that name on the application? And also where's the proof of liability insurance from the property owner and the company providing wireless service? The liability coverage does not have any pollution exclusion or EMF exclusion, otherwise the city is unprotected. So the application and the representations are either uncorrect or incorrect or incomplete. And so on that basis, this item can't go forward until there's, these have been uh corrected. Um, on, again on Susan, what Susan Nine was saying about the issues that were in the CTC report. An earthquake vibration, settling corrosion and misinstallation are among the factors that can cause 70% of the um RF limits to become out of compliance. And tomorrow night, there will be a city council closed session with a long list of lawsuits the city's already embroiled in. Um, should the residents be expected to carry the expense of new lawsuits? Um, or see vital city services cut back if there are lawsuits because antennas are out of compliance? And can the city weather a, a PR nightmare if it becomes known that it approved a project that subjected visitors, especially visitors, but also local businesses to quote borderline exposures? Um, regarding FCC exposure limits, the FCC itself has said that these are for the general public. I'm not the general public. I'm qualified as disabled according to the ADA and ADAA's definition of disability. And I and others in the community are disabled by electromagnetic sensitivity. This project is almost double the Hyatt's effect of radiated power and one half mile closer than the Hyatt's my house. And I experienced worsened disabling effects inside my home when the Hyatt first net antennas were turned on. This project would violate FHA and FHAA, further blocking the use and enjoyment of my home and discriminating against me. It would, as the applicant says, it would blanket downtown. So this project would block my path of travel and my use of the public right of way. Um, that would violate uh state laws, public utilities code 7901, California Civil Code 54A and 54.1A1. Um, the streets that would be blocked from me would be Pacific, Moonrise, Alvarado, Del Monte Avenue, and all the streets in downtown and in Old Town. Del Monte Avenue is now my only route out of Monterey since the city approved the AT&amp;T Hyatt first net antenna, blocking my access to State Highway 1. So this project would block my only other available route out of Monterey.
So we have your name, please.
Including my bank, which is close to the property, the post office and medical facilities. It would block my coastal access and thereby likely violate state law. Um, and it would block my access to public parks as well as increase the radiation levels at City Hall. So this is, and I'm not the only one in Monterey that's under the same sort of blanket
Please come to a conclusion.
Disastrous effect on our access. Um, it would raise the noise floor for everything, including emergency responders. And there's no proven significant gap in coverage for this project. For all these reasons, I ask for project denial. It has significant problems. Um, and the uh application um seems to go against um the telecommunications act, which is 601C. It says that um federal, state and local laws, the TCA should have no implied effect. Um, shall not be construed to modify, impair or supersede federal, state or local laws. And then in the 1934 communications act, section 414 also said
Conclude. Your time is over.
Nothing in this act contains or in any way abridge or alter the remedies now existing at common law or by statute. But the provisions of this act are in addition to such remedies.
So Ms. Beatty, I'm
By the ADA, the ADAA.
The chair is asking if you can wrap up your comments, please.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments today, Ms. Beatty. Um, I will now go to unmute last four digits, 8130, Mr. Clancy. 8130. Yes, you can make your comments.
This is Jean Rash, resident of Monterey Vista. Um, this reminds me a lot of the hearings that we had on the wireless ordinance when we discovered that there had been no proven gap in service. And it sounds like we might be right back there again. Um, if there's not, no ongoing validation of compliance once it's put up there, our duty is really to document beforehand that we're in compliance, that the, that the vendor is in compliance. And the duty of safety is of great concern. That's that is what we have to hold sacred to residents, to citizens, and that we're protecting them and that we are not swayed by uh, you know, the desire to grow and expand and accommodate business. Um, so I would encourage very close um adherence to our ordinances on all this. And thank you for your work on this. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Rash. Um, I am now unmuting the last four digits, 3756, Mr. Pekin.
Portola Plaza site since 1991, has been subject to various modifications over the years. But for this project, this will be another modification, which is removal of the nine existing panel antennas installation of nine new panel antennas and some associated equipment. The owner is uh Custom House or Portola Hotel and Spa. The applicant with presence have questions later is James Phillips. It will be, this property is owned visitor accommodation facilities district. And it's a federal plan designation is partial. Thank you. Now, just like to explain the project review process, this proposal is a modification to an
Oh, you know what I just realized? I think this is Mr. Hiddleman's presentation.
That's what it is, Kim.
I think Mr. Pekin is playing the, the YouTube video in the background, so we can't hear him. And I think he's re-listening to the presentation. So I will give Michael um one more chance. Mr. Pekin, you're, you're unmuted, please.
You have a new project, 160 day shot clock, which runs through September.
I'm sorry, um, I don't think Mr. Pekin has shut off his TV, so we can't hear his um comments this evening. Um, I'll turn it back over to you, Chair Brassfield, for commissioner deliberation. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. I would like to open it up for commentary by the commission.
Uh, this is Hansson. Sorry, I'm just trying to tell my camera on. Uh, Kim, this is a question for you. Is there any? I mean, so the owner of the property is, is Custom House Hotel Company LTD. Is there any issue with that at all? Uh, owner, property ownership at all? I mean, I, I just looked that up. I have access to that information. Just curious as to if that's an issue at all, or if that's a red herring.
Um, I don't believe it is. Let me just check our GIS database right now, which would be the registered um property owner for the site. But um, I believe, I mean, Custom House LP, Portola Hotel and Spa is who I know to be the owner, but
Yeah, it's, it's not the owner. I mean, I, I, it's not. Like, I have title company records that show that, um, that I looked up, but it's it might be the less E, but the real estate owner is, is, is Custom House Hotel Company LTD. And if you can look at the Monterey County Assessor's website as well, so.
Yes, I do have it up. Yes, the county assessor data is Custom House Hotel Company LTD.
And is that an issue? Is that an issue with the application at all?
Let me go back to the original application to see who signed it. Why don't you go ahead with your additional questions and I'll be
That's all I have. I mean, otherwise I don't have any problems with the project. It needs to, you know, it's I, I, no further comments, other than I would wait to everybody else to move to approve, so.
Any other comments? Mike? Sandy? Uh, one of the questions
No comments from Sandy.
Okay. One of the questions.
I had a comment. Yeah, never mind.
So My question went to regards to some of the, the questions asked by the public. First of all, as I understand it, Um, first of all, as I understand it, will, it will be a test done after this equipment is installed. Is that right, Jerry?
Uh, that's correct, Chair.
Thank you. And regarding the liability insurance, that's typically covered, isn't it, Kim?
Um, I, so let me just answer one question at a time. Is there another one? Cause I have the application up right now and I can share my screen.
Go ahead and answer, answer that question.
So the application that was filled out is Custom House LP, Portola Hotel and Spa, by Janine Shikarat, who signed on behalf of the Portola Hotel. Um, I know her to be the manager of the Portola Hotel and has signature authority. Um, so while I understand there might be a slight discrepancy right here of LP versus what's in the GIS database, I think we're fine in terms of the property owner intending to sign off. And we can verify that at building permit as well. They're gonna have to sign the building permit.
Great, thanks.
Okay, then my question went to the liability uh issue that was brought up by the questions. Uh, there is automatic liability that goes along with the application?
I need to.
Then you asked about liability insurance, Mike.
Correct.
I honestly need to pull up the ordinance and compare the, the adopted ordinance versus the um, the proposed ordinance and just compare. So it'll be just a.
Is that condition number three you're referring to, indemnities?
Thank you, Jerry. That's condition four.
Oh, four, I'm sorry.
It says, "The permitted and if applicable, the non-government owner of the private property upon which the personal wireless service is installed shall defend, indemnify and hold harmless the city of Monterey, its agents, officers, officials and employees from any and all damages, liabilities, injuries, losses, costs and expenses." Um, and it goes on, you know, to talk about various claims, demands, lawsuit writs of mandamus and other actions or proceedings for, um, brought against the city or its agents, officers, officials or employees to a challenge. Or anyways, the whole, the whole approval process.
Kim, was this whole thing obviously approved by the city attorney's office?
So this language has been approved by our outside legal counsel, who provided consulting services for our city attorney's office.
So we have a defendant indemnify, but no insurance?
Yeah, we have an indemnity clause, but I don't see the requirement for insurance.
Thank you.
And thank you for answering my question as well. So it's after it's been reviewed by, by Joe and by our city attorney. I, I feel pretty safe on moving forward, but do we have any other discussion or?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, this is Terry Latassa.
Go ahead, Terry.
So, um, I, it's funny, I've, I voted for, I think every, every one of these um uh cell tower applications on commercial buildings. And usually they've been accompanied by these exhaustively thorough technical studies. And I think the city and the applicants usually do a great job. And I think probably on this project they did too, but I, I do find this whole discussion of these balconies and this RF exposure issue a little bit lacking. You know, like that, that one RF exposure plan with the blue and the yellow areas of exposure. Uh, it doesn't include apparently the west wing of that hotel, which is the area of balconies that they are referring to is having some, even though they say it's a 70% hazard, but still, that isn't shown on that RF exposure plan. Maybe I'm mistaken, but I'm pretty sure it wasn't. Uh, um, also, I think they should include vertical sections showing those same blue and yellow bubbles uh in a vertical way as they pass through this building. There are hotel rooms right below all this equipment. So I, I know in the past, this commission typically approves these projects partially out of um some level of intimidation by FCC rules and, and the shot clock issue. So um, I um, I just wanna say, I'm not, in, in this particular case, I think we need more information to make a a qualified um approval.
And Kim, this is not a 6409 project?
No. That is our city conclusion because the lease area has changed. I know in the past, AT&amp;T has disagreed with us on that particular point, but they have worked with us. So we believe it to be subject to the 150-day shot clock, which I believe, and Jerry, clarify with me, ends December 7th.
That's correct, that's correct.
Thank you. So what is your pleasure, commission?
Well, I'll make a motion to continue this application for more information. Uh, specifically, the RF um exposure plan should include the west wing of this hotel and the balconies. And also that I would ask that they provide vertical sections uh through the hotel and especially the very top level of hotel rooms in relation to these proposed uh transmitters.
Uh, could I ask if you want to include not just that wing, but there was two other sides with antenna that would have similar issues?
Well, yes, if you could clarify exactly what you mean by that.
Sure, there, yeah, the antennas are only, are mounted on different sides of the building.
Right.
And not just, just that one side where we have that yellow and blue. If that report could include those other sides, because it's the same number of transmitters on three sides, nine total of nine.
Okay.
Three sets of beams.
I'm sorry?
Three sets of beams.
Yeah.
Where, where that's going out.
So, uh, do we have a motion? Terry, you wanna make it a motion?
Terry didn't make it a motion.
I made that a motion, but I don't hear a second.
Then do we need a second? We have a second?
Would you like me to repeat the motion that I captured?
Sorry.
Would you like me to repeat the motion? Sorry, my mouth.
That's a good idea.
We're, we're discussing a second now.
Yeah, I just wanna reiterate and make sure everyone's on the same page, so.
This is Milic. I'll second it for discussion purposes.
Okay, uh, discussion.
Um, this is Mike Dawson. Um, I, I agree with Terry. I think we need some more information and, and I don't think it's gonna be a big problem for AT&amp;T to, to gym up that information because it's, they should already have it in hand. Um, uh, I'd really like to, I'd like to make sure, I'd like to be sure that uh we're not irradiating those, those folk in that, in, behind those balconies. Yeah, that would be a real good, that would be a, uh, be able to sleep at night, as it were. So I'm seconding motion.
A second, second, so.
Second, second.
Anybody else have a comment?
So I have a question, I have a comment and a question, this is Hansson. Um, at the end of the day, so when the, and I think the answer is yes, but this, cause I think I've heard it twice now. So once the antennas are up, those balcony, the, the uh exposure level at, on the balconies will be tested? Um, and what happens if the radio, if the exposure level is higher than anticipated? Can the city do anything about that? Or is it, is it, we test it and there's no teeth in the testing?
They would not get final inspection clearance for their facility. They cannot operate it.
Okay, so I mean, to me, that is our, what we're asking for is information, but at the end of the day, they're good. I've been, I'd be happy to hear from AT&amp;T, so I see you just sort of the applicant and so just get that information.
So before that occurs, James, the chair needs to recognize you if he chooses to do that.
Yeah.
Go ahead, James, if you can answer the question.
Thank you very much. Sorry, I was trying to be polite and just wave and not interrupt. These exposure reports that you're seeing by the third-party Hammond Edison that are also double-checked by the third-party um on the other report. So we've got two third-party engineers now to double-check AT&amp;T's equipment, first off. So neither one are AT&amp;T subsidiaries, part of their business or whatnot. So AT&amp;T comes to Maztec, Maztec chooses to go and pick a third-party to do a report. That report has been verified by a third-party that is paid for by the city of Monterey. So AT&amp;T is not the one making these reports. I just wanna let everybody know that. These are third-party engineers that are contracted to do so. Um, in regard to these reports, though, these are based off of 100% maximum capacity of the equipment involved. So the physical study that is done out in the field, in theory, should never be higher than what is actually on paper. It should only come in lower if the calculations are correct. I just wanted to point that out to everybody.
Thanks, James.
Does that help your uh question, Mr. Reed, or do you have more with that?
No, more, my question was more of the, the, the reality of it, of actually being tested. Um, cause I, again, we, I think what we've been told a lot is that we don't do testing. Sorry, move my hands away from my face. Uh, we don't do, like, we don't, no, uh, we don't do testing. Uh, and so that's why I was, I guess I didn't understa, that we only relied upon and the city could only rely upon the, the, the reports and the actual, whatever the actual is, we'd ever really hear about that. Um, and, and so that's, I mean, so that, that was my question and I, and I, it's around about, it's fine, I don't.
And to quickly answer that direct question, um, we do this in multiple cities now where we actually have what they call a field study done after it's turned on. We cannot get a building permit approved and finalized until that test has been completed. So in the fact that this does get approved, we install the equipment and then we have a third-party company go out there and actually take the measurements and it doesn't pass, then AT&amp;T can no longer proceed with that, cause it's subject to be modified to lower the requirements that are there.
Okay, great, yeah, that's perfect. Yeah, that, that answers my question.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, okay, thanks. And then so kind of responding to Terry's uh motion and, and the second is that in reality, we're gonna, we, we have that backup check. Um, you know, I was leaning towards going with that to get the information, but I, you know, we're gonna be, have somebody doing that to make sure that in fact the numbers are what they're going to be. Um, I would agree with Terry that this is a significantly different location than every other downtown location. Everything else has been on the outside of a building where it really goes away from everybody, whereas this is, you know, hotel that going straight toward, potentially going straight towards, not even potentially, but, you know, it has the appearance of going straight towards hotel rooms where there's gonna be guests. And for that reason, there is, or there should be, you know, a, a better study, cause it's not just going out to the, you know, the community, it's going straight at guests. So that would be my worry, but again, I, I'm comfortable with the, with, I'm comfortable either way, but I think that the test that would happen and they wouldn't get the building permits uh or the final permit is enough to protect us.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
The comments.
Mr. Chair, um, just a, just a point, uh, I agree with, with Hans, to a certain, Hansson, to a certain extent, that uh if, that we should be able to trust the third-party engineers at the, at the, at the bottom line, at the, at the very end of this process. However, what happens, what happens if, if the antenna gets bumped? What happens, what happens after, after a, an earthquake? What happens, what happens to, to those two folks in the, in the, uh, behind the balconies? When, when the antenna, instead of going at three degrees out, is going at three and a half degrees out and suddenly the, the beam is in their room with them? So I, I really think, I think we need to have, you know, a specific look at that, that ugly situation.
Thank you. Uh, Dan, any comments? You've been pretty quiet.
I'm in support of the motion.
Thank you. Sandy, any last comments?
Yes, I'm in support of the motion as well.
Thank you. Then I'll, we have a first and a second. Let's call for a vote.
So can I have one point of clarification, Chair Brassfield? I'm wondering if we're continuing this to a day certain, um, or whether I'm gonna have to renotice. So there is a possibility to continue this to October 13th. The applicant would have to be able to get us that amended study by no later than next week. Otherwise, we would be continuing it to October 27th. So I'm just looking for clarification from the applicant. I think October 27th is the most realistic date to continue to a date certain.
I would agree. Uh, can you?
I think we're scheduled to look at ADUs on the 13th. And that might be, uh, that might be a long one.
So do I need to amend my motion?
Yes, I would like it amended to be continued to a date certain of October 27th. So the public as well as staff knows.
I, I so amend my motion to continue. Uh, and the second?
I agree. I agree. Milic.
I support that as well.
First and a second, and can we have a vote? And that's with the modification. Right.
So with the modified motion, we have the first coming in, uh, Commissioner Latasha and Commissioner Milic seconded that motion. Now for the roll call vote, we have Chair Brassfield.
Yes.
Vice Chair Freeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Dotson.
Yes.
Commissioner Fletcher.
Yes.
Commissioner Latasha, Latasha.
Yes.
Commissioner Milic.
Yes.
And Commissioner Reed.
Hi.
Thank you. That was unanimous and the topic is moved back to October 27th of 2020. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next on the agenda is eight overlooked place variance request. It was deaf.
Hi, good evening, Chair Brassfield and Commissioners. This is Kristi Sabdo, Associate Planner with the City of Monterey. I'm going to present, so let me share my screen. Okay. Um, the applicant is with us today. Um, applicant Sunny Sayini applied for a use permit to allow a change in use from single-family to residential care general, um, which would allow assisted living and memory care center at this, this address. Uh, staff is recommending approval of the use permit to allow residential care general use. So the project is located along Pacific Street. Um, it's also, um, the frontage is along Alameda Street. Um, there's a side along Pacific Street, um, and also, or Toldome Way. It has a low-density residential designation for the general plan, zoning is R1. Uh, adjacent and surrounding uses include R1 primarily, surrounding uses include R3, C2 commercial, visitor accommodation facility with some hotels and open space. So the site uh is vacant now, but it was previously a single-family residence. And since, um, well, you may have been able to visit the site, but I did include quite a few pictures. Uh, so this is the Pacific Street frontage. You'll see, there's a carport here. Uh, this storage room is going to be demolished to allow for um another parking pad. Here's Pacific Street frontage as well. This is the Alameda Street frontage. Uh, this is the um, the frontage of the property. Um, just if you can see my mouse here, um, this is where um the recycling and garbage enclosure will go behind the wall. I can, I can go back to the pictures as well. So for background, um, the applicant is proposing an assisted living and memory care facility for 15 people. So the use um that would allow this is residential care general use, uh, which requires a use permit. It's a, it's, I want to read the definition. It's a 24-hour non-medical care for seven or more persons, including ward, including wards of the juvenile court, which doesn't apply, in need of personal services, supervision, protection, or assistance essential for sustaining the activities of daily living. This classification includes only those services and facilities licensed by the state of California. Residential care general requires a resident manager. So just as background, the applicant is the owner and operator of the Del Monte Assisted Living and Memory Care Facility in Pacific Grove. So the intent is to provide care to the elderly, especially those with limited cognition. The facility would be open 24 hours a day, seven days per week. It would be under the leadership and supervision of a full-time state-licensed administrator. The administrator will be on-site Monday through Friday, 8 to 5 p.m. Two or three of the nurses will provide care Monday through Saturday, 24 hours a day. They'll share shifts up to 40 hours per week. And there will be programs provided by mental health specialists. So I know the site plan is hard to see. I can pull up the PDF if you'd like me to a little bit later. But the site plan includes, includes the the building, which goes kind of like a U-shape. It has a courtyard in the middle. Here is the carport. And like I said, the storage unit will be removed here. And here's Alameda and Pacific Street. Let's see. So in the site plan, it shows a kitchen, a living room, staff workstation, courtyard, eight bedrooms, including seven with two beds and one bedroom with one bed. So 15 total for 15 residents. So to share with you, these are the structures that are on-site. The only thing that's going to be changing is the attached storage unit next to the carport will be removed. They will be adding enclosures for recycling and garbage. And they will be getting a building permit for that. The municipal code requires one space per three beds. There's 15 beds proposed, so five spaces are required. So here is the proposed parking plan. The, here's the carport spaces two and three. They're nine by 18. Everything is standard. The one through three are standard parking spaces. One is where the storage unit will be demolished, and then they will have a parking stall in its place. Four and five are proposed. Five is barely in the front yard setback. It's a van-accessible space. And four is also an accessible space. They submitted for a reasonable accommodation to have these two accessible spaces in the front yard setback, and that was approved by the director. So here we have the five required spaces. And let me talk about emergency services. So the fire department did a site visit. I thought it was great. They brought the ambulance. They parked it. Here's Alameda. They parked it in the, in the driveway here. And they took out the gurney. Everything worked out and fit for that space. The fire truck will park along Alameda, and so the emergency service was, the plan for it was approved by the fire department. The applicant included the plan for garbage and recycling enclosures, and it's, it was reviewed by our staff, sustainability staff, but they still have a little bit of work to do. And so I added a special condition of approval to make sure that happens prior to building permit issuance. So there are three use permit findings. One is the project is in accord with the objectives of the zoning ordinance and the purposes of the R1 district. The proposed use is allowed under the residential care general use or general use with a use permit. Five off-street parking spaces are provided as required, including the approval of the reasonable, reasonable accommodation request for two spaces that will be accessible parking within that 20-foot setback. The proposed use and conditions under which the use will be operated or maintained is consistent with the general plan and will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare of persons residing or working in or adjacent to the neighborhood. The general, general plan provides social element policy as well, B1. The city should encourage development of various types of housing for seniors, including retirement housing and care facilities. And this use does fit in with the general plan. It's primarily a residential-type use and would fit in well with the neighborhood. The third use permit finding is the proposed use will comply with any specific conditions required for that use. In the staff report, you'll see that I have suggested special condition one, that the applicant continue to work with the City of Monterey Sustainability Division to provide refuse and recycling carts, containers, and enclosures that are consistent with the City of Monterey's recycling and waste enclosure standards and guidelines. And then I noticed, as I was preparing this PowerPoint, that there is a tree in parking space four that, it says will be removed. That's a 12-inch non-native tree. And it's considered a protected tree because on private developed properties, trees with a diameter of six inches are protected. So it requires a tree permit through the planning division, and so I've added that condition here. And so with any recommendation by the planning commission, I would ask that you add that second condition as well. Staff recommends approval of use permit to allow a change in use from single-family residential to residential care general care to operate an assisted living memory care facility. I'm available for questions, and the applicant and designer are on the call as well.
I have a question. First question is, I drove through the circular drive or the hemispherical drive today, and is that going to be maintained as is?
Yes. Can you see, are you seeing my screen with the site plan?
Yes, I see it.
They, it will be maintained unless a, there's a van-accessible parking space here, which there won't always be a van there, and they're sharing vans between the Pacific Grove Assisted Living Center and the one that would be here. So cars won't always be able to come and go here. But we did look at the required distance for backing out and going into the street.
I only asked the question because obviously Pacific is such a busy street. It seems quite handy to be able to drive through in a circular way, just from the standpoint of safety.
Sure. Well, I think spaces one, two, and three would be able to back out and then go on to Pacific. And space four here, they're driving in, and they could back out and back into space four, and then five just come in and then leave.
Pacific is a very busy street.
Yes.
And I noticed when you come out of Whispering Pines Park, you can only turn left. Pardon me, you can only turn right. You're not allowed to make a left-hand turn.
Okay.
And I'm wondering where one, two, and three are. Are cars coming out of there going to be able to turn left or only to the right?
On my site visit, I did, and yeah, cars do go fast, but there's, there's enough site distance. I was, I felt safe. I just had to go at the right, leave at the right time. It wasn't really busy.
Okay. I have one more question, and that is, from what I know, people who have Alzheimer's like to wander, and what fencing or safety protection for the residents would be provided in the way of gates or fences?
Sure. I'd like to ask the applicant to answer that question.
Sure. I give Mr. Freeman.
Why don't we just, why don't we just hold the questions for the applicant till we get done with staff? Thank you, Mr. Sunny. Any other questions of staff?
Yeah, I have a question. This is Hudson. That was a, that building was originally built as some sort of overnight group stay facility originally, wasn't it? Because I remember for many, many years, there was a sign out front of it telling what it was. It was not originally built as a single-family residence.
I believe that's the case. It wasn't the last use, of course, but it, I believe that was the case that originally it was.
That was the only question I asked.
I saw somewhere in the, in the verbiage that, that the zoning, the zoning or the use could also be construed to be a homeless shelter. Now, I hope we're not doing homeless shelters in R1. That I think that they were supposed to be in, in commercial zones only.
So for this use permit, it's not a homeless, it's not, they're not proposing a homeless shelter, and the use permit is specific to what they're proposing, so. And that would be the assisted living and memory care facility.
Right, thank you.
Any other questions? I have a couple. Just to clarify, is the carport going to be maintained as a carport?
Yes, it, it will accommodate parking spaces two and three.
Okay, so we're going to maintain covered parking there?
Yes.
And, and one additional to the left of it?
Correct.
Okay. Next question, landscaping. If we're going to be removing some, is there a landscaping plan and going to be any changes?
I'd like to ask the applicant. There's no requirement for that, so the applicant can speak too.
And that part is predicated on seeing that a lot of times after a few years, the landscaping just goes away. And it's not maintained, so that's why I ask.
Sure.
Is there going to be street parking available along Pacific?
Hmm. I don't think so, but I'm not.
I don't recall any no-parking signs.
Sorry, I'm not sure about that.
I don't see any no-parking signs or red zones on Pacific, no, in that area.
So, okay, so then that's a potential for additional, so. That's all the questions I have. Any other questions of staff before we go to the applicant?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, this is Terry Latasha. So I noticed on the, this page you're showing, it says it's sprinklered, so this building is going to have fire sprinklers?
That's a requirement of the building department, and I believe that the applicant can speak to that.
I saw that in the report.
It's required for the change of use, and I see Mr. Davis is on the phone as well, and he can confirm that. Thank you.
And, and just to clarify then, that these cars, one, two, and three will be backing up onto Pacific Street?
They can, they can back up this way, if you could see my arrow, and then.
So they can maneuver and go headfirst onto Pacific? Okay. And I guess the last question I have is this reasonable accommodation feature of this application. I'm not familiar with that. Can you, how does that work? I've never done that before.
Sure.
Happy to explain that as well, Christie, and just talk about the foundation of it. The city is required under state law to provide reasonable accommodation for persons with disability. And we amended, in compliance with state law, we amended our zoning code to allow flexibility with zoning standards if it's meant solely to address accessibility issues. Where this comes up the most often for us and is approved administratively at a staff level typically is a an ADA or, you know, a ramp that somebody needs to change the staircase, and they need to build a ramp in the front yard setback in order to be able to get into the house. So the city's probably historically, I think we've approved like two or three ramps. It's not a tool, it's not a part of our zoning code that's used that frequently. But when looking at this application, the two ADA parking spaces are technically, one encroaches, the one directly in front of the building, I think just a corner of it encroaches into the front yard setback, and the one on the side of the property, number four, is substantially more in the front yard setback. So this is an accommodation to allow the site to provide ADA parking.
And that's basically a review and a letter of approval by the director?
Correct.
Okay, thanks. That's all I have.
Just one more question. Would you point your cursor at the main entrance to the facility? That's what I thought. Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, then hearing them, let's open it up to the applicant. Sunny?
Thank you so, so much. Really appreciate your time and accommodating us. So first of all, I want to thank for inviting us to the city of Monterey. I'm originally from the Bay Area, and I bought my first facility over there last year in Pacific Grove. And coming from the Bay Area to Monterey Peninsula, it's a breeze. You know, you, all of a sudden, you realize that there is humanity still left in this world from the craziness that we deal with every day. Like, people still open the door for you, and they let you in before they are ready to run you over, and everybody from the planning committee to Christie, to every single person I have met, they have been just above and beyond. So thank you so much and really, really appreciate it. So answering a question to Vice Chair Freeman, so this facility was actually built, it was not originally built to be a facility, but this was used as a facility for more than 25 years. It was called Pacific Rest, and it operated as a facility till about four years ago. At that point in time, the previous owners, which were two doctors, they sold it, and then the new owners, they tried to run it as Airbnb, and unfortunately, they went out of business, and that's when we purchased this facility. And actually, when you take a look at it, the only use that can be done with this is actually use it as a facility. It has seven rooms. And I'm not really sure if somebody can actually use it as a single-family home. And it kind of creates lots of open spaces where seniors can freely enjoy outdoors and be with nature and still be excluded. So it is kind of meant to be a facility. And going back to your question, Vice Chairman, there will be the front entrance of the facility as well as a side entrance. It'll be on time-delay egress. So there are two ways to exit the facility. Either you enter the punch code, which I highly doubt any of the residents that we are looking planning to host, they will be able to remember a six- or eight-digit code to safely exit. And this, in case of an emergency, somebody has to hold the exit door for a weight of, I believe, more than 15 pounds for about 15 seconds, and at that point in time, the gates will be released. And there will be a loud alarm, which will inform the care staff, as well as it will send a signal to a monitoring service, and this facility is going to be monitored 24/7 with a live agent, and it will also send a signal to fire as well as to police department. And we are working all, all of those details as we speak. Since this was a facility for the longest time, it is already fire-sprinkled, and we had the initial fire inspection. And we have a couple of comments that came back, but more or less, we are good to go. That was the assessment that was given to us by the fire chief. And I'm pretty sure I'm missing at least a couple of questions, if not more.
Let's go ahead and start. Any questions? Sunny, I have a couple of questions.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Steve.
About the fence, did you address the issue of whether the area along Pacific is going to be fenced at all?
So as a requirement of the state PSS, which is Department of Social Services, the entire perimeter is going to be covered with a six-feet fence. Not on the Pacific Street, but all of the living quarters, and the only way in and out of the facility is through those gates, which are going to be monitored, and you need a punch code, or it will raise an alarm.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Hi, Sunny. Hello, everybody.
Hi Sunny, hello everyone, this is Sunny Swainano. There was a question on, somebody asked a question on the landscaping and the circular driveway, if you could address that as well, please.
Yes.
Yes, what are the landscaping going to be, Sunny?
Yes, so we want this to be a model facility. And we want it to be pride of City of Monterey. We have plans to make, put lots of flowers. So I believe that the best thing we can do for our seniors is that we can provide, take them as close to the nature as possible. So we will be planting lots of flowers and plants to make this facility where people would, who are visiting Monterey would want to come by and say like, look at this place, it is, feels like, you know, out of this world.
Thank you. What level of memory care do you plan on?
So we are applying with the DSS for folks who have Parkinson's, Alzheimer's, and other memory dementia. And if we look at the way we are envisioning this facility, it's going to be a pretty sophisticated facility. So if we look at all our, all the other facilities in this area, most of them, they just have a memory care wing and it's nothing more than another kind of attachment to the building or part of the building which has been behind the doors. And they do not really have specialized personnel to provide care to these folks. So the, what, the way we envision it is that we will actually have licensed professionals who will be providing specialized care. And our focus is primarily going to be on the quality of life and provide dignity. So we'll be providing lots of things which are going to be out of box. For example, we are thinking of pet therapy, music therapy, aromatherapy, massage therapy. And this will definitely be above and beyond any other facility in the area.
So it's regarding memory care, will you have locked patients?
Sorry, I didn't follow that, Mr. Chairman.
Well, so, some levels of memory care require them to be locked, so we don't have open access.
Exactly, so this facility will actually have the, both the main entrance as well as the emergency exit are going to be time delay egress. So people cannot wander out of the facility.
But not generally locked to just a portion of the facility?
This entire facility, all the 15 residents, so the license we have applied with the state is going to be for all 15 people to be accommodated with special needs.
That's why I ask, because some facilities have different levels of access for the people who live there, including memory care, which are highly restricted. They, they generally just cannot even walk down a hallway without being accompanied. So that's why I ask.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, so this entire facility is going to be treated as if it was a locked facility. So residents can walk around within the facility on their own, but there will always be a care person to accompany them.
Thank you. And you bring up another question when you talk about having ward into the court. And I assume you're talking about juveniles, is that correct?
So this facility is going to be only for people 60 and above.
That answers, that answers my question. Thank you. That's all the questions I have. Any other questions? Okay, that's, if we know other questions, let's open it up for public comment.
Once again, that number for public comment is 831-582-6500. The conference ID is 1927648. And just a reminder, please follow along with YouTube at Erica Shortest Away. And when you are on the call, please mute your computer or TV or what you're watching the meeting from, just to eliminate background feedback. Thank you.
Hearing none?
We currently have no public comments, please. Thank you.
So if we don't have any, then let's bring it back to commission.
This is Hudson. It sounds like it's a great project. It's needed definitely on the, on, in the community. Sorry, there's sun behind me. And it sounds like that they're willing to put the time and effort to make it work and I strongly support it. I'd make a motion, but I'll let everybody else speak first if they want to speak. Otherwise, I'd move to approve.
Okay, I have one comment and it goes back to my first question. I've only been to a few residential communities like this, Forest Hill in Pacific Grove and Ardenwood in San Francisco and Belmont Village in San Diego. And this circular drive is such a benefit to the facility as it's envisioned. And I support Hudson's comments as well. I think it's such a wonderful idea and a great thing you're doing. It's neat that the facility is available, but I don't know if you can eliminate parking space number five. But I think that the benefit of having that circular drive is high based on being able to drop off and pick up residents to go to their various medical appointments and visits, et cetera. So that's my comment.
Thanks, Sunny.
I have, I have a comment I'd like to make. Dan Fletcher here. I, after reviewing the, during the packet, I, I was just very impressed about how thoughtful this project, how, how well thought through it is. And how all these issues have been addressed. This is right up the street from my office. I pass by this all the time. When it was a different use for many years, I had never experienced there being any issues with traffic or someone trying to pull out there at all. I, I just think this is kind of an ideal location for this type of facility and I'm in support of the project.
This is Dan. Steve?
Oh, I, I'm in full support.
Mike?
Yeah, I'm in support as well, although I used to have a doctor right on, right on Pacific there. And one day I came out and somebody had flipped over a Porsche right in the middle of Pacific. Right, right by that facility. And I thought, wow, I wonder how he did that. But, you know, sometimes you can go pretty fast on that road, although at that location, I think the speed limit is 25.
Really? Wow.
Terry?
This is Terry, yeah. I'm in, I'm in support of the motion. I think it's a very appropriate use for this site. And like Dan said, it's a, a well-thought-out project.
I, I don't think a motion has been made, but I would like to, to move that we approve this project, including the condition of the proposed tree to be removed, requiring it to get a tree removal permit.
And that's the two conditions that Christie put on there.
And I'll second the motion.
So that includes the two, the conditions that city staff has recommended, is that correct?
Yes.
And this is Hudson, and I'll second it.
Thank you. We have a first and a second. And any other discussion? Okay, that's call, roll call.
All right, the first up on the roll call is Teri Brackfield.
Yes.
And Vice Chair Freeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Dawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Fletcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Latasa?
Yes.
Commissioner Millet?
Yes.
And Commissioner Reed?
Hi.
Thank you, that was unanimous. Back to you, Chair.
So it's passed. That, time to move on to the eight overlook.
Is that appealable?
It is appealable, I believe. Thank you, Hudson. We have, we have.
I'd like to say thank you.
You're welcome.
And if I could just take one last 10 seconds, so we couldn't have done this project without the excellent support from Christie and Darren. So thank you so much.
Thank you, it was a pleasure working with you.
Thank you.
So we have a presentation by staff on eight overlook, and this is the variance.
Yes. Share my screen again. Okay, this is Christie Savdo, Associate Planner with the City of Monterey. I'll be presenting eight overlook variance application to allow installation of fencing along the side and rear property lines exceeding the six-foot height limit. Staff approves, recommends approval of the variance to allow installation of the fencing that exceeds the six-foot height limit. So to show you where the project is located, it's in the Skyline Forest subdivision. It's designated low-density residential, zoning is planned community. And it is located, it fronts on Overlook Place. And you'll see that behind is Skyline Drive. A little bit closer up. So the lot is a regular Pentagon-shaped lot, approximately 15,930 square feet in size. The single-family dwelling sits below grade of Overlook Place. The lot slopes 26 feet or 15% from the front of the lot along Overlook Place to the rear of the lot. So it sits higher here and goes down from there. So I took a lot of pictures just because I know that the planning commission wasn't able to go to the site. So in this aerial photo, you'll see a highlighted area and that's the area that I'm showing you. So this is along Overlook Place, the frontage of the property. There's fencing on each side. This is the detached garage. There's fencing here and you can't see fencing, but it's, it's covered up with vegetation, but there's also fencing on the other side. So I'm showing you the side that you can see, which is right here. And that's, this, this is the same fence here at the front. So you'll see there's a retaining wall and then fencing above it. And then from there, it's fencing. I have additional pictures of that area. So this is the south elevation. I'm showing you, as you walk back, you enter that gate, this is what the fencing looks like. This is the garage and this is the house. House is further back on the lot. So this is considered a fence that was included in the fence elevation because it's not attached to the house. The applicant was saying that it doesn't really touch the house, it just kind of sits there, but it, it looks like it's kind of integrated into the architecture. And this is further back on the south elevation, kind of moving towards the rear. And we're here on the property. This is the south elevation moving down towards the rear. Kind of the same picture here, the south elevation and the rear. So I wish I would have gotten better pictures of the rear, but there's fencing along the entire rear elevation. And then they have this retaining wall that goes along the rear, kind of in a little bit, and then follows on the other side of the property. You see here, kind of this is where it's located. And this is what it's, that's what it looks like. So to give you some background, Skyline Forest subdivision general development schedule does not include fence regulations. The general planned land use designation for the property is low-density residential, therefore the R1 district regulations for fence height applies. The R1 district requires a maximum fence or wall height to be six feet, except in required front yard setbacks where the maximum height shall be four feet. There's also supplemental regulations applicable in our districts that would apply. The combined height of a retaining wall and a separate fence on a property, property line shall not exceed eight feet. And then it goes on to say, unless the fence is set back from the retaining wall, which doesn't apply in this case, the fence is on top of the retaining wall in certain portions. And then in no case, I think this in no case, oops, may the fence exceed six feet in height. I think that applies to where the fence needs to be, where the retaining wall and the fence are separated. Then in that case, it should be no higher than six feet, but the combined height of a retaining wall and a separate fence on a property can be six, or can be eight feet. So I'm going to show you the elevations that were prepared for this proposed fencing. Well, it's already installed, but I'm calling it proposed fencing. This is a typical elevation showing you that there's a solid fence with approximately 14 inches of lattice on top, most of the fencing. It steps down as the elevation decreases on the property. So here's the front yards, here's Overlook Place, here's the front yard setback. Like this area here, there's no fencing in the front yard setback, there's a retaining wall, but there's no fencing. So I'm going to show you the west elevation and the south elevation right now. So the west or front elevation is that area I showed you here. It is seven feet in elevation here, this part. This is the south property line here. It varies in height from seven feet two inches to over eight feet six and a half inches as it steps down to the rear of the property. So here is that retaining wall I was talking about. And then it just, it's just fencing and goes down to the rear. This is that part of the fence that's atta-, well, not attached to the garage or house, but just kind of sits next to it, and that is eight feet in height. Here's the rear of the property, kind of. I'll show you the elevation here. And it's about eight feet here, seven feet eight inches here. I did want to share with you that, and I flipped the aerial, so Overlook Drive is now over here. But I wanted to show you that when, and this is the rear of the lot here. But here's Huckleberry Drive and Skyline Drive behind this lot. When cars pull up to Huckleberry Drive, the light, car lights shine into the residence, or at least before the fence went up. And so this elevation shows cars on that, on Huckleberry Drive. And that there are lights shine into the, the house without the fencing. And so this, the part of the purpose of the fencing as well was to avoid having car lights shine in the house. So there is fencing as well here. We're back to Overlook Drive being on this side. Again, this is a detached garage, this is the residence, and there are, there's like a courtyard enclosure here, but there's fencing here and here. And this shows, this is where it goes up to 10 feet, and apologize, I don't have pictures of that. So there are general variance findings required for a fence height variance and then specific variance findings for fencing. And I'll go through those right now. So the first required finding is that because of special circumstances or conditions applicable to the subject property, including topography, strict application of the requirements of this ordinance deprives such property of privileges enjoyed by other properties in the vicinity and under an identical zoning classification. So there are special circumstances applicable to eight overlook place. The property slopes 26 feet or 15% from the front of the property on Overlook Place to the rear of the property. The fence begins at the sides of the house where the garage is and steps down from there with the topography. The fence height varies from six feet to 10 feet, allows the owners to have a more private and secure property on a sloping lot as described by the applicant and property owner. In a letter submitted with the application, there have been many occasions where security of the property has been a major concern. The fence would allow the applicant and owner to enjoy the privileges of safety and security that other property owners in the same zoning classifications enjoy. The fence would allow the applicant and owner to enjoy the privileges of safety and security that other property owners in the same zoning classifications enjoy. The second variance finding is that granting the application will not be detrimental or injurious to the property or improvements in the vicinity of the development site or to the public health, safety, and general welfare. Granting the fence height variance would not be detrimental or injurious to the property improvements in the vicinity of the development site or to the public health and safety or general welfare, because a fence height varying from six to 10 feet high along a property that slopes 26 feet or 15% from the front to the rear of the property would be compatible with the neighboring properties and would allow the owners a more private and secure property. As stated in the applicant's letter, there have been concerns about the security of their property on multiple occasions. General variance finding three is that granting the application would be consistent with the purposes of this ordinance and will not constitute a grant of special privilege inconsistent with limitations on other properties in the vicinity and in the same zoning district. Granting the fence height variance is consistent with the purposes of the Monterey zoning ordinance and will not constitute a grant of special privilege inconsistent with the limitations on other properties due to the special circumstances of having severe topography on the property at eight overlook. So here, there are special fence variance findings required, and it states in the, in the code that one of the following determinations can be made out of these three. So it, it, I covered two of them because it's not a commercially zoned property, so I'm going to cover A right now. So it does meet this one. There is a significant grade difference where the house is lower than the street. So this kind of shows it in the pictures. But I, in the topographic survey here, overlook place is at 44 feet. The garage and courtyard area starts at 40 feet, and then the house goes from like 36 feet to 27 feet. So there is significant difference in the elevation between Overlook Place and the house and other structures on the property. The fence does not appear as a visual barrier and does not impede the sightline for vehicles. So that is true. It's on Overlook Place. It's kind of in between other residential properties. It's not on a corner and meets that finding. So the, it has to meet a subsection also that there is a physical hardship with one of the following, and topography is the one that it would meet. So like I indicated, there is a physical hardship with the topography of the site. The property slips 26 feet or 15% from the front of the property to Overlook Place, the rear of the property. And so it meets that finding as well. And I do want to fess up here that I wrote this report before I did the site visit, which is really a no-no, so lessons learned on this one, but I wanted to ask that you remove the special condition because I thought this picture applied to the property in question, and that's just applicant had prepared a memo with pictures of properties that don't meet the six-foot height limit in Skyline Forest. And so I thought that if this was the property, that they need to remove these kind of decorative fencing, parts of the fencing, but that, this property only has standard fencing with a lattice on top, and therefore I would recommend that that special condition be removed. Staff recommends approval of the variance to allow installation of fencing along the side and rear property lines exceeding a six-foot height limit. And I am available for any questions, and the applicant is on the line as well.
Thank you. Any questions by the commission?
Yeah, there's the house to the south, is it, of this house? On Overlook?
Let me get to the aerial photographs here. That's one. Sorry, let me get to the
Are the, are the two adjoining number nine and 10?
Here we go.
Are the two adjoining number nine and 10?
Yeah, number nine and
Seven.
Seven and nine, right.
Now, is nine or 10, do they have the same slope to, and topography?
They do.
And do they have fences higher than six feet?
I don't know what their fencing situation is. I did look. I didn't see in person, and I tried to look on Google, and I didn't see fencing, at least from the front. They may have fencing, but I couldn't see it. The applicant may be able to speak to that.
Yeah, hi, Kristy, this is Phil Billier, the applicant, and
Let's hope, Bill, let's hold off until we get the condition questions. Thank you. Any other questions by the commission? Okay, hearing that, let's go to Bill and see, let him make his presentation. Go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, it's my understanding that nine and 10 do not have fencing along the line. When we put up the fence between my house and nine, they, they did not really want a fence there. They liked open space. In my application, we have a police report dated January 8th, where two intruders entered onto the property, which prompted the, two weeks later, that fence went up. My daughter was here at home alone, and it just, it needed to be done. We were told also by the police department that without our boundary defined, because we do, the, the space between our fence and Skyline is actually city property, and we're also right next to Skyline or Veterans Park, which has, you know, different people coming and going out. They're kind of almost, you could say, transient type of population coming and going out of there. We've had people wandering on our property different times of the day, so the fence was, was necessary for our safety and security.
What size fence would be necessary? Why not a six-foot fence?
Well, a six-foot fence, you know, works fine on a flat lot, but once again, there was a, a picture that Kristy showed that we have a retaining wall that flattens out, and even as you're standing on that at eye level, that current fence standing at seven and a half, eight feet, only is really about four feet when you're looking out from the flat part. The other thing is that, that fence is, at that current height, is blocking the lights from the cars on Huckleberry. A six-foot fence would not do that, would not accomplish that. One of the other issues was when we had Coke compliance come out, and he measured the fence, he measured from the low end. So a six-foot fence measured from the low end, from the other side of the fence, that's four and a half feet because of the slope. So, I mean, we were running into those issues. We did have, have an open part of the fence to try to mediate, you know, any, any of those issues with neighbors or light planes or anything else by having the lattice.
Any other questions? Okay.
I have no questions. The applicant have comments, though.
Let's hold those.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Dan.
Thank you, the applicant. I'm just curious as to how you built the fence without understanding what the requirements of height were in the first place.
Bill?
No answer? Did we lose him?
You're muted.
Yeah, I'm not
I'm, I'm back. I'm sorry. I put the mute and actually kicked myself off, so.
Did you hear the question?
I did not.
Dan, you want to repeat it?
Yeah, I was just curious as to how your builder or your, whoever built the fence, built you a fence higher than what was allowed.
I, I don't quite understand that. I mean, I, I
There's some regulations in the city for this height of fences, and you built a fence that exceeded that. I mean, how did you get to that point? I'm trying to understand why we're looking at this as a variance today.
Well, partly reasons because I didn't know there was a requirement. I had been in the process of doing remodel on the house, pulled permits for everything. It was my understanding when I called the city, I didn't need a permit for a fence, but my failure was I didn't, I didn't look at a fence heights requirement, because other cities where on real estate, we were allowed to have six-foot plus of, of lattice on top. This is the first time I ever had to have a house or a fence built on a sloped lot. And as opposed to, if I had six feet just coming straight down from the top of lot, I didn't think that looked really good. So I, I wanted to step down the fence to go with the train.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, let's bring it back to the commission.
I'm sorry, I need to open for public comment.
Sorry, public, public comment. Excuse me again. Let's see if we have public comment.
There are no current public commenters. I will read off the phone number and let you know again if anyone has called. So that dialing number is 831-582-6500. You will need a conference ID to join. That is 19276485. There are still currently no callers, and once again, just a gentle reminder to please follow along with the new you, as that has been shorted away, and also turn down your volume when you are called.
Thanks, Jennifer.
You're welcome. No public comment.
Now we'll bring it back to the commission.
I have a, I have a, I guess, a comment. We haven't, we haven't heard from the neighbors. I think, I think if, if, if the 10-foot fence or that nine-foot fence is, is objectionable, somebody should have been objecting.
Well, we did receive some emails.
Yeah.
Somebody did object.
Somebody, yeah, somebody, somebody
That was number 10. I think he was the original complaint.
Yeah, but if you read that email, this is Hansen, if you read that email, it doesn't even think, he doesn't even, it's, it reads like he doesn't even know that there is a fence there. It reads like, don't put up a fence. I don't want it, I want it open. So I don't even know if he knows that there's a fence there. So that's, I mean, I read it like it was odd that there, it was talking about, don't put up a fence because it's open land. Well, there's already a fence there, and you could at least put up a six-foot fence.
Yes, but I, I believe he was the original complaint to the city about putting, about the fence. So, anything else?
Well, I'd like to make a comment. I, I don't think this project has met the general variance findings requirements. Just specifically on topography, I mean, the whole city is on a hill, and this is the first time a variance has requested for fence height has come before planning commission, at least since I've sat on it. I, I don't see how, how it meets, meets these criteria, and I, I think that if we were to vote for this, it's granting a special privilege to this property owner that other property owners don't enjoy. And if there's six feet, then the enforcement officer should be looking at that.
That's why I asked my question, Dan, about the other lots to the south, whether they had the same topography, and they do, and they have not asked to be treated separately or differently. And I think to grant this variance would be granting special treatment that's not justified.
Teddy?
My comment is that I once lived in, I'm going to support this variance completely from the standpoint of safety. I once lived in a lot that was 65 feet at the street and went down 325 feet to a Los Angeles County storm drain, which itself was 20 feet deep, and the chain link fence was only six feet high. And I had three toddlers at home. Let me tell you, six feet was not enough. So from the standpoint of safety, I would, I would approve this variance.
Yeah, and, and this is Hansen. I, I believe in the packet, there are pictures of other properties. There's exhibits, and I'm looking at the exhibits, uh, where are they? Exhibit five, six, seven. I don't know if eight is the right exhibit or not. Eight, nine, 10, looks like 11, 12, 13. At least, you know, half a dozen plus exhibits of other fences in the, that area that are taller than the six feet. So I think that this, although variance might not have come bef, and if you look at the pictures, there are, there are not, one of them is a newer fence, so I don't know about that. At least it's newer painted. It looks like it was freshly, I'll, I'll say that. Looks like it was freshly stained. But I don't see it granting any special privilege. And based upon the topography and everything else, that, that this is, you know, we want things that look good. We want things that are done right and done well. Yes, shame on him for building a fence without getting the, without getting the proper approval beforehand. But to me, that, 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 we don't want rules just for rules sake. We want rules. We want things that look good, and the step fence on this kind of topography on a very steep topography looks much better than a straight line down. And I think that, that's part of it. I mean, again, we keep, we have to look at aesthetics as well as you know, you know, does this fit? And yes, it fits, and I, to me, I think it's, it's, it's we're not granting a special favor, and I, I support the, the variance.
Any other comments? Kim, I have a question, or Kristy, whatever. How many such variances have we given on this type of initiative in the city?
I, I don't know historically. I think in 2019, we granted one on, I think it was Prescott Avenue, if I remember correctly. So it's maybe about one a year.
How tall?
Um, it was a, well, it was a fence that exceeded the height in the front yard setback. So it turned in four feet and was six feet. And one of the primary issues with that was the, well, the amount of traffic on that particular corner that they were experiencing.
Okay.
Yeah, this is Terry.
Hey, Terry.
I, I see Dan's point. The findings on this, to me, are a little bit squiffy.
Yeah.
That's a legal term, isn't it, Hansen?
Yeah. That's great.
But, um, so, you know, I know the, I, I think Kristy's done a good job with the application. It's, it's very sort of sensitive to this applicant, and making a variance application is a lot of work. But that alone isn't enough to give a, you know, variance. So the whole special privilege thing, I, you know, I, I could go both ways on this one, but actually, I do agree with Hansen that there are so many examples of overheight fences in this area that it really is, is not a special privilege. It's a sort of a common privilege, and so I'm, I think I'm also in support of this application for variance.
I'm looking at a couple of things. It's a very irregular lot. And that grade, the, the topography is, is pretty severe. And I, in my travels, I look at Texas where they have 10-foot fences based on wooden fences with 10-foot poles every eight feet. And I asked the fire captain back in Dallas, how do you get around the, the safety issues, the why we have typically a six-foot fence with a lattice no higher than two feet, or a total of eight feet? And he said that they never had a problem pulling down a 10-foot fence. If it gets really rough, they take a chain out of both trucks, out of two trucks, put it at the top of a steel pole and then they have free access. So I understand why we have these restrictions. I, I'm kind of sympathetic here to the property owner, but I, I also have concerns that I, I hate to have the idea of hadn't been committed, then just beg for forgiveness. So I, I understand Dan and Terry's concerns. If, no other comments? And let's put it to a vote. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the variance application VA 200118 to allow installation of fencing along the side and rear property lines exceeding the six-foot height limit at eight overlook place based on the at eight overlooked place based on the findings as stated in the city report and subject to conditions and exhibits attached.
Without that special condition that.
Without the special condition, right.
And this is Hansen, I'll second.
We have a first and a second? Any comments? I heard a noise. That was, I guess. Okay. Then let's have a vote.
All right, I have Vice Chair Freeman as the first and Commissioner Reed as the second for the, we'll call vote. We have Chair Raffield.
No.
And Vice Chair Freeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Dawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Fletcher?
No.
Commissioner Latacca?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
No.
And Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
That was close.
That was very close, but it looks like we passed with four votes in favor and only three votes against.
Thank you.
10 days to appeal.
And yes, I'm just going to comment, there is a 10-day appeal period. And I do appreciate that we had some comments from both sides, from neighbors. That really helps. The next item is Commissioner's comments. Actually, I think that we have some issues that come up from Kim.
I do. A couple of things to share. The city council tomorrow evening at 4 o'clock, I guess, late afternoon, will be discussing their work program. With the staffing cutbacks that we've experienced, we're really needing at a staff level for the city council to set our work priorities or to give us an indication. I think probably some of the two hardest divisions hit are probably community development and our legal division. As you know, we lost Elizabeth Carragher as part of our planning team. That was a permanent loss with the budget cutbacks. So from my perspective, we're needing to know from the city manager's office and city council priorities one, two, and three for our advanced planning work program. Number two, the city council, you may be aware of, have recently directed staff to look at the issue of marijuana or cannabis and possibly to allow retail sales of cannabis, which will require rewriting of a lot of our rules and regulations. So we've requested on September 30th, the city council will be holding a study session on cannabis and giving us some direction at the planning or ultimately for the planning commission, what we're supposed to study. So some of the things we can look at are retail establishments, grow facilities, you know, do we want warehouses to be able to grow marijuana? There is also, there's various uses of, or types of uses that involve cannabis. So this is one of the more recent assignments. I know I don't quite understand how that relates. We've been working 100% on affordable housing issues and made a lot of progress in that arena. Is cannabis higher than some of our other work priorities? I think it is, but I'm not positive. So I think between tomorrow afternoon session and the following Wednesday, September 30th at 4 o'clock, we'll start understanding what they expect the planning commission to work on.
I want to make a comment on that, Kim. If you, planning commissioners have not seen these two reports, the council workshop priorities exercise and the city staff work program, they're both Excel spreadsheets. They're well-done and self-explanatory. Great to know what all of the issues and priorities are. Thank you.
Kim, would you be good enough to send us a link on email to those report?
Sure. The only one that's been published so far is the work program. The cannabis report will be probably published on Friday. So we will, we'll make sure to send you links on both of those.
Thank you.
And that's it. Everything else is going well? Just working away.
Thank you.
Well done.
Commissioners comments?
I have one, I have one comment. Jennifer's mask is making it impossible to hear her. So can we, can we work around that somehow? It's, my hearing is pretty good, but I was having a real hard time figuring out what she was saying.
And also, Jennifer, if you could speak a little further away from the mic or not so loud, quite so loud, especially with that muffle on, it's just very difficult.
I'm so sorry. I will tighten that up.
I think it's, you're pretty, you're pretty understandable, but it's like just the parts where you were reading out the, like that password number for callers in. A little bit muffled. If I was somebody trying to write that down, I'm not sure if I would have gotten it.
Yeah. I have, I have one sad note to add to the end of the meeting. A great friend and a great ARC member, Chuck Kimsey, died this week. And his gathering is not a service, he didn't want one, is at San Carlos Cemetery, 2:30 on Friday. And he was a very sincere and great member of the Architectural Review Committee and a very good chairman. So, and a good friend. So I just wanted to pass that on.
Thanks, Cindy. Any other comments?
No.
Yeah.
Go ahead. I have a couple. Doing the cell tower today, cell towers again. I really hope that we look at getting the results vetted from the cell tower committee to the whole commission. It's, if you read it, that's one thing, but we need a discussion because it is, as you all see, it's a very complicated topic. And only two of us had the favorite of participating in gaining some of that knowledge. But it's, and it's not getting any better. Not at all. Second comment is, I received some comment, Kim, about the way we do things. And if, for instance, typically, we're supposed to stop at 5:30 and go to dinner, but we don't. So if we could have a discussion on getting through COVID-19 and some suggestions in a discussion at the next meeting, I'd appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you all. And I want to thank all the staff today. I mean, we heard from a lot of people and it's not getting any easier. So thank you very much.
Thank you all.
I will call the meeting to adjourn.
Bye, thank you.
Thank you, bye.
Bye-bye.